Morning, everyone. And welcome to the March 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. I would like to start by reading our land acknowledgement. I acknowledge that we are, that the municipality of Jasper is on Treaty Six and eight territories, as well as the Jasper House-Maitie District. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Denze, Asinowich, Winnawak, Asinowachi, Naya, Nehayowak, Anishinaabe, Sepwetnik, Stony Nakota, Mountain Maitie, and Maitie. The municipality of Jasper acknowledges the land. To honor the relationship indigenous people have had with this land, to remind us of our responsibility and obligation to this place and to indigenous peoples, and to affirm our accountability to address the ongoing impact of colonization that continue to affect indigenous peoples. I would like to welcome everyone who is in the gallery. We have a number of individuals, as well as everyone online. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? I have two additions to be included in correspondence. We'll have 6.1 letter from Anna Lee Pardon me, Berengrun, and also 6.2 letter from Daryl Savage, Jasper Skate Park Committee. Would there be any other additions to the agenda? There being none, could I have a motion to approve the additions to the agenda? Thank you, Councilor Keller-Hampi. All those in favor? And then with the additions approved to the agenda, may we now approve the revised agenda? Councilor Wilson, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Brings us now to item number four. The February 27, 2024 Committee of the Whole Minutes, which were approved on March 5. Is there any business arriving, arising from the minutes? Seeing no business arising from the minutes, since those were already approved on March 5, we'll go on to number five, which is delegations. And at this point, I'd like to just make a note that this is a portion of the agenda in both our Committee of the Whole and regular meetings where the community can come forward to address council on any topic that's on the current agenda. And I did ask earlier, is there anyone who wishes to address the current agenda or a topic on the current agenda? And there is not in the gallery. This opportunity exists at every regular council meeting in the Committee of the Whole. And it is always appreciated if people who would like to address council can give us notice ahead of time so that we can plan for you on the agenda. This can be done by emailing our Emma Acorn or at the municipal website or info@jasperalberta.ca. It is listed on our government page as to how to arrange to address council. Moving on to item number six, then, correspondence. Item 6.1. And if I may, I just must have given to do what to introduce the letter.
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Milne. The letter from the resident, I think, was was sent on March 1, was responded to by the deputy mayor. The resident had a number of questions and statements regarding public transit. I know that that initial letter went by email to members of council. There was some confusion because it wasn't copied to administration directly. And a member of council followed up with the resident and had the understanding that the expectation was that this would appear on a public agenda. So we sorted that out and wanted to present it here so that it could form a part of the minutes, so it could be a part of the public record. But the resident has, as I said, received a response from council, who the letter was originally addressed to.
Councillors, I believe we would need a motion to or a recommendation to have council include this as part of the minutes of this meeting. Thank you, Councilor Keller-Hampi. All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item 6.2 is a letter from Daryl Savage, Skate, Jasper Skate Park Committee. And again, Mr. Given, if I could have you introduce the letter.
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Milne. This letter came through over the weekend. And it's it is of a timely, timely need. The Skate Park Committee is very close to the point where they need to confirm construction and initiate that for an April start. In the letter, Mr. Savage reports that they are seeing a shortfall of approximately $140,000. And while they are continuing to pursue other grant opportunities or sponsorship opportunities, they need an understanding of whether they should move forward with the project as originally scoped with a total cost of just over a million dollars, $1,058,000, or whether they need to reduce the project scope and delete elements of the facility. The committee's proposal or request is that council consider interim financing for the project, essentially providing financial support that would be paid back in terms of a loan to the committee so that they could build out the project at the full scope. The urgency is, again, as I said, to confirm construction to be able to start with the limited construction season they have for a project like this. Council has the letter here. It obviously would form a part of the public records, so the general public could see it. But I think the essential question is, is council interested in providing financial backing to the project in the form of a loan that would be repaid? If council is interested in that, I think the Skate Park Committee would appreciate having some kind of indication if there's a positive intention for support. And administration could follow up to provide recommendations on an appropriate format or method of providing that. Again, my understanding is that this is not a request for a grant from the municipality. Rather, it's a request for interim financing to enable the project to go forward at its full scope while the committee moves forward with continued funds.
Councillors, do you have any little questions for Mr. Given, or is there councillors who would like to comment on the request? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Milne. I want to see this go forward in the full scope. I'm wondering, is this something that the municipality can do?
Deputy Mayor Milne, for Councilor Hall, we would have a number of different options. I'd want to consult with finance, but the first that would come to mind, and just conceptually, we do have some flexible reserve funds, which we could in essence self-finance. We wouldn't have to go and borrow money to lend money. We'd also be in control of the interest rate that we could charge to the committee. And so administration, you know, has at least that option available. There may be others that I haven't considered at this point, but if council was inclined to provide support, I believe that the municipality has the capacity to be able to do this in-house.
Counselor Keller-Hampi?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Milne, to you, to Mr. Given. When this project came on front of us at budget, we talked about in-kind. Is that in-kind included in this 140? Or is this 140 on top of the in-kind?
Deputy Mayor Milne, for Councilor Keller-Hampi, this 140, I think, is inclusive of approximately $30,000 expected value of gift and kind. Director Greathed has been working with the Skate Park Committee to identify work that the municipality could do with our own labor and forces that would save them costs. I think we've estimated at this stage that it's about $30,000. Again, that's that's an estimate, and I think the committee in their request here is taking that amount off of the total cash that they're part.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given.
Director, greetings.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor Council. I was in discussion with Daryl yesterday about this project and the in-kind and the scope of work. In-kind right now, all we've really committed to from municipal support is to excavate above the top foot and a half of material and roughen the footprint of the skate park itself, where the foundation is to be. There are some other areas, given council's latitude, that we could increase our in-kind support as well, where we could take on some of the subcontracted stuff, such as landscaping and some of the soft touches on there, as well, like some of the softscaping of the park. So, given the latitude, I think we can have a discussion later this week and hone in on another number of what in-kind allocation, and then I need council's latitude to perform the work.
Counselor Wilson?
Mr. Given, could you just just give us a brief outline on how much the municipality has committed up to this date, how much has been raised? And you're just, I just kind of shed a little light, like this, this in the end will be a municipal we owned asset. Yeah, where I think we're probably getting about 50% brought to us from the Skate Park Committee. I think that's why I just wanted maybe you guys ask, Mr. Given, if you kind of should like on a bit of the numbers that we've kind of committed to.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Milne, for Counselor Wilson. So the, in the correspondence, the committee is reporting that the total cost is going to be, as I said, just over a million dollars. To date, the municipality's committed cash contributions of $300,000. So the amount brought forward, expected to be brought forward by the committee from external sources is is more like 70%, so the municipality is putting in about 30% and 70% coming from external sources. That's the, that's the total amount of the municipality's commitment of cash to the project so far.
And the municipality will fully own this asset once it's completed?
Sorry, yes, that was the other part of the question. Sorry for missing that. Yes, the intention is that because it is located on municipal property, that after construction, the asset would be turned over to the municipality.
Yeah, I think it's pretty amazing that this isn't just another scenario where it's money's been brought to us to, for, for our infrastructure, our, our assets. So I think it's great. Unfortunately, they're about 13% under with the amount that they need. I couldn't see us coming to an agreement by the end of the week. I think that's not appropriate, but I do support, to support moving forward with the additional funding.
Counselor? Oh, pardon me, Counselor Roger?
Thank you. I too would probably be in support of this because I witnessed Daryl Savage put in an enormous amount of energy and enthusiasm and effort into raising funds, and I think this has been, you know, it's a significant accomplishment to have brought close to the the $700,000 to the table. So I think, and it's to his credit that he's still willing to continue to look for funds after the fact. And that is, to me, from my perspective, a real testament to his dedication to this project.
Thank you, Counselor Roger. I'll take the opportunity as well to comment. This is a great opportunity for us to add another long-term asset to the community with what should be minimal ongoing maintenance costs. It is something that, as I say, will be available for the next number of generations and in an area that's relatively accessible. Sometimes these facilities are built in areas of the community that are a little more remote, a little harder to get to. But we have the opportunity to have this park right in the center of our community and would be accessible for guests and visitors to Jasper as well. So I would support us looking into how the municipality would be able to cover this shortfall. And I might work to administration for what, what direction we need from council, whether there'd be a motion to or recommend to council that a motion be made, but Mr. Given, if you could help us with how that would be best handled through a regular council meeting?
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Milne. Well, council was inclined to consider providing support. I think that there's essentially two steps. The first would be the committee recommend council provide interim financing. You probably would want to set up to a maximum of. And my suggestion would be $150,000, just because some of the, the value of the gift and kind is not yet solidified. So that 150 might justify that flexibility in case the gift and kind doesn't match up exactly as we thought. And then the second step would be directing administration to identify appropriate financing methods. And then we can come back likely by next week at the council meeting with a recommendation on our appropriate method so that when council is considering the sort of approval for the financing, you'd have the recommendation for the appropriate method in hand. So two motions, the first, that committee recommend council approve interim financing of up to $150,000 for the Jasper Skate Park Committee, and that committee direct administration recommend appropriate financing methods. That would be my recommendation, council is inclined to have a positive response to the letter request.
Councillors, Counselor Wilson?
Mr. Given, have permits been applied for, or superintendative permit yet, or?
Deputy Mayor, to speak to Counselor Wilson's question, yes, they have been submitted. I believe that they've already been approved. So right now, it was just a realization that there was still a shortfall funding that precipitated this talk with Daryl and with the new line skate parks, just to make sure that we're, we're still ready to go, Steve.
And with, sorry, and with the appropriate funding in place, you guys probably started stripping the the site April of this year, or?
With the in-kind work that we've already committed, we were planning on stripping, having the survey done and stripping the land beginning the middle of April. New Line Skate Parks is anticipating the first week of May, and their timeline is a 14-week construction schedule from there. So that accounts 14 weeks from the first week of May, and that's when they anticipate the skateboard park to be used and available.
Yeah, that's exciting.
So councillors, we're looking for a couple of motions, Counselor Hall?
If there aren't any other comments or questions from the table, I'd be happy to make the motion. I can do it probably in one speech. That committee recommend council approve interim financing of up to $150,000, and committee direct administration to recommend appropriate financing methods.
And for administration, that I'm sure is clear the intention. If there's other comments, I'd call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Now moving on to new business, I would ask Mr. Given, we under the item 7.1, men's shed location options.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Milne. So we have an item that was on the motion action list. We received a presentation from the men's shed group at budget time. There is a request to administration to work with the group to identify costs of their initially proposed location and potential for other locations. The community development team has put together this RFD, and I think Mr. Redell is going to introduce that report.
Hugh, good morning, Deputy Mayor Milne and all of council. So administration, that was the men's shed group. And just to discuss the two proposed locations as indicated in the motion, they discussed a number of potential locations, and together jointly ruled out a number of sites that wouldn't be viable for a number of reasons. The discarded options include a site beside the existing log cabin in Centennial Park inside the log cabin itself at Centennial, and a couple of locations in Estlock as well. And two viable sites were made after that work. One adjacent to the museum. And for this site, the men's shed would be large enough and located appropriately, but there were some concerns about proximity to residential areas, needing enhanced community consultation and the costs associated with this site would also require a lot of development review and permits, et cetera. The other site that was viable is adjacent to the activity center. And this is using one of the bays in the three-bay garage between the new ice plant and the new arena change room addition. This would be the simplest and least expensive option, needing $35,000 to $45,000 of retrofit to be functional. And present less of a challenge in terms of the public acceptance and development approval permits and requirements. And so administration's recommendation is that committee direct administration to develop more of a formal partnership with the men's shed group in order to create a men's shed in one bay of the three-bay garage. I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Redell. Are there questions? Go on. Administration? Mayor Island?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Milne. Through you to Ms. Redell. I just wonder whether there is any exploration of any sites in Waukeville. Do we still have property there? I mean, we, we built that three-bay garage, I presume, because we thought we needed that sort of space. We have limited space throughout the community. Just wonder whether there's an opportunity else.
Deputy Mayor, to speak to Mayor Island's question. I believe the intent of that three-bay garage is to house some of the materials for the trade shows that used to go on, so the carpeting that went on at the arena, which is no longer in use and it's been disposed of. And as well, I think it was for housing some equipment this last year, and a bit it's been used as a lay-in area for the Carlson Construction Project and rental at the Activity Center. So that's where we think, like, we don't, we don't foresee continued need of that space. It's not affecting anything operationally.
Thank you.
Any other questions for administration? Counselor Roger?
That's why not a question, but just, that's exciting to think that this is potentially going to come to fruition. I know it's been discussed at various tables for multiple years, and I think this could be a wonderful addition to our, a wonderful programming addition to our community.
Thank you. Counselor Keller-Hampi?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and to you, Mr. Greathed, and Mr. Given. I think this is a great project. I just have a question. The space, will we put bathroom in there, or will they'll have accessibility to our activity center?
Thank you, Counselor Miller. The intent in there is to provide water service and a drain line, a floor drain line. We weren't sure of all the activities that may take place in the shed. You know, we can see a requirement for domestic water. Originally, the thought was the washrooms at the activity center aren't close enough, so we wouldn't build a washroom or anything like that. Just make sure there was availability, say, if somebody wanted to do some tile cutting or where they need some access to water.
Thank you for that, Mr. Redell.
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, that kind of covered most of my question. We didn't see the need for bathroom, and so I was trying to put some numbers to the, or sorry, put, put some work to the amount of money that's still needed, like 35 to 45. So again, I guess underground plumbing hookup and water service, but is the garage not heated already? And yeah, just if we are using an existing bay, are we going to need $35,000 of upgrades to it? Seems maybe excessive. I don't know.
Director Greathed, I see you're ready to answer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Wilson, yeah, we do expect that we're going to need to do ground penetration to bring in, to put a floor drain and would tie it into some of the existing services close by. I believe that we need to run gas and electrical in there. It's mostly the cold storage building right now, so there would be some work to enhance the facility about, like, we would still, like, we'd need to cloud the walls, some insulation and stuff like that. There's, there is a fair bit of work to do.
I'm sure, though, the men's shed, people could probably cloud the walls, insulate the walls, and do some of that work, too, which is be cut down on some costs, which is great. Thanks.
So I just want to ensure I understand that the proposal is to provide the space and to assist once financing is in place for the men's shed to be able to use a part of an existing building. I imagine that this will probably take through most of 2024 for fundraising. I don't know if there's, at what level the fundraising has been so far. But this seems to be a a very good again, option since it does keep things in the townsite. It also doesn't involve additional construction or extensive additional water service at the other facility out over at the, next to the museum. From here, I take it that this would need to go to council, or is there a individual who would be willing to make a motion to direct administration to carry this to the next level, unless there's any other discussion? Counselor Wilson?
Okay, I'll jump in there. Yeah, yeah, I think I would make the motion that committee direct administration to develop a partnership, to create a men's shed in one of the bays, or one of the three a men's shed in one of the bays, one of the three bay garage at the activity center and to return to council with with this, you know, proposed partnership agreement. At future date.
I see heads nodding around the table and administration, it's clear. So Counsel Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just want to speak to the motion, which I am in favor of. A very quick Google search shows that there is close to four thousand suicide deaths in Canada each year. Seventy five percent of those seventy five percent of those are men. Mountain towns can be isolating lonely and we recently lost another man in our community and I want to thank Mr. Wilson for his work on this. This came about in the fall and we're already here and I think that's amazing. And please reach out to me when you start fundraising.
Thank you for that. Any other comments to the motion? I see no hands up, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And that brings us to agenda item seven point two. Mr. Given, will that be yourself or will it be Ms. McGrath presenting?
Deputy Mayor Milne, it's absolutely going to be our community development team. This is the annual report on the last cycle of the Community Economic Development Fund that council's established. So the teams here provide an update on how the twenty twenty three is used before we launch into the twenty twenty four funding cycle. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Redell and Ms. McGrath.
Good morning Deputy Mayor Milne and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to show to you a essentially a year in review of the twenty twenty three Community Economic Development Fund. The initial intake was in May twenty twenty three for a six month project running July to December twenty twenty three. Council awarded three applicants twenty five hundred dollars each totaling seventy five hundred dollars. I supported the recipients through the contract negotiations and use regular check-ins about six check-ins throughout the six month period to ensure that projects and activities were on target and that relationships were being built and that recipients also felt supported by the municipality through this process. The final reports are attached that were received by January thirty first as per our policy. And the outcomes and results of the funding were that the Jasper Local Food Society received twenty five hundred dollars. They served thirty to fifty liters of soup daily from Monday to Friday, running from ten AM to seven PM from Glenda the Great Soup For You program. As well as the Jasper Pride Festival Society was successful at hosting three events totaling two hundred and eighty participants that had success bringing the LGBTQ two plus community together. All funds were spent by the local food society and the pride festival society. The point to note is that the Jasper Seniors Housing Society did not proceed with their project as intended. On we were contacted by the chair of the Jasper Seniors Housing Society, letting us know that they had not yet had a decision made by the United Church with respect to providing land for the project. They were waiting for assurance of land availability, feeling that it would be inappropriate to accept municipal funding prior to this. On October third, the chair connected with us by email, letting us know that there was still no decision reached with their partners of the United Church offering land to the seniors housing society. The Jasper Seniors Housing Society applied for funding in good faith based on what was believed to be firm commitment. However, we're deeply regretful that the project did not proceed. Within the timeline of the project being closed December thirty first, we felt it was too late to approach another applicant toward the funding. Thus, that remaining twenty five hundred dollars did not get spent.
Thank you for your report. Ms. McGrath, are there questions from counselors? Counsel Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm curious if the seniors housing society, this is for Ms. McGrath, maybe indicating that they would come back again to reapply?
We did not, sorry Counselor, Deputy Mayor Milne to Counselor Hall. We did not receive any further communication from the seniors housing society.
Counsel Keller.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Milne and this might be to Mr. Given. The funds that were left over from twenty twenty three that go back into reserves or is that carried over with the fund for twenty twenty four?
Deputy Mayor Milne, for Counsel Keller, I can confirm the status with finance, but my understanding would be that generally the funds would carry over from year to year. They would go in to the total of the municipality's year end financial results and would form a part of either municipality's overall surplus or deficit, surplus. We don't tend to run deficits. And so they would be a part of that total year end. And at that time, council have the opportunity to decide in accordance with our policy and council's wishes, what you'd like to do with any year end surplus that might arise. So there isn't any automatic rule over the funds within that granting program.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any other comments from counselors? Mayor Island.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Milne and through you, we are the presenters. The, the soup for youth program is absolutely fantastic. It's well received. It does the job that it needs to do by connecting people. My only observation is that by funding that program, have we committed to funding it long term? And should we therefore look at that funding somehow out of funds other than the Community and Economic Development Fund? I mean, if this becomes an annual matter to, to help fund soup for you, so if you continue as a, as a really beneficial program, then that twenty five hundred dollars is taken every year from the Community and Economic Development Fund and not available for any other applicant. And yet the fund is there to, to spur initiatives to develop community. And so I'm wondering whether you put any thought into whether there should, it could be a different way to fund the soup for you program to allow us to retain the Community and Economic Development Fund at the ten thousand dollar mark or, or other applicants.
Deputy Mayor Milne, I'll speak to that on behalf of administration. So the Community and Economic Development Fund grants are provided on a, on a one time only basis. There is an opportunity, I think, for community groups to apply for funding again if they wish. And then they'd be subject to evaluation under the program criteria. And I don't remember off the top of my head whether there's a prohibition on a group receiving additional funds for a similar project in the second year, but it was explicitly one year only funding in the first place. If the soup for you organization wished to request additional funding from the municipality, they would have options available to them. First, they could apply for a second time under that fund. And again, you know, would be evaluated in accordance with the, the funding guidelines. Or they could choose to apply, you know, make application to the municipality or request to council just generally for ongoing operating funding. And council could deal with that hardly soft fit. I mean, our typical time ideally would be in alignment with regular budget decisions. So we're a bit out of cycle for that now. But certainly a group can come forward at any time and council can consider any group request at any time it wishes. But there is no expectation created that this would be ongoing operating funding. It was explicitly a one time only grant. That's how the Community and Economic Development Fund is set up. And it would be up to the group essentially to make a request to council if they wish to secure ongoing funding through the municipality for the program.
I appreciate all of that. Thank you for the answer, but and it would also be up to council to deny. And previously, my recollection at least is that for Community and Economic Development funding, we had a provision which is now not in the policy that the funding was not for operational needs, but we have no such provision. This is I think quite clearly operational. And if we don't continue to fund, assuming we get a request, then presumably the program dies, which, which puts us in a I think a delicate situation. But I, I can accept that and we'll see whether the group applies again. But if they do, I think council should look at alternatives, because this, this has the potential at least to morph into annual funding for not just this group, but there might be others that want the same situation. So just for down the road, it seems to me we will have to go back and address those.
Thank you, Urshin. And I just want to make a comment. We will be looking at the twenty twenty four applicants coming up, I'm sure in the next month or so. So there is that opportunity for groups to, to make application to this fund. Are there any other questions for administration? Counsel Weller.
Again, just a comment that I think when I look at what was achieved by the, the two groups who did receive funding, it was a significant impact in the community and makes me happy that we do have this fund available for people with great ideas to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? If not, we'll need a counselor to make a recommendation. Thank you, Counsel Keller.
The committee recommend council accept the Community and Economic Development Fund twenty twenty two corporate information.
Any comments, counselors? If not, I'll call the question. Owen, that's carried. Thank you for the presentation and appreciate the good work that's been done with the funds that were distributed to the two groups that were able to use the funds available. Which brings us to item number seven point three. And Mr. Given, let's see utility receivable write-off request for twenty twenty two, twenty three.
That's right. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Milne. So this item is with respect to a request that the United Church proponented in writing in February. Was referred to administration for review and recommendation. The recommendation in the report, if we receive the report information, take further action. We do have a number of alternatives that I can describe should council, maybe wish to take some action in response to the request. So the request arises because of the change in the utilities, municipality's utility rate model. As council well knows, we moved to a system with three discrete components of the bill, the connection, consumption, capital charges. The consumption obviously billed on the volume of water consumed and an estimate of the waste expelled by a property. The connection charge reflective of the general sort of system administration costs that are ongoing, whether somebody turns on the tap or not. And the capital charge reflective of the sort of on demand requirement, requirements to do capital replacement of the system as a whole. Those latter two items, the connection charge and the capital charge are billed at a rate that is reflective of the size of the service to the property or the meter of the property. Each property that has one bill receives only one connection charge. But the capital charge is levied for each meter service that connects to a property. The United Church has sensed the change in the system, has been paying their bill for the rate of the smallest meter only. And this has left their account outstanding the amount of just under ten thousand dollars, nine thousand six hundred and twenty and forty five cents over the course of the last two years. The church has requested that they only be billed for the smallest of the two meters that serve their site. So that's, that's the background of the request for council's information. There are six churches in Jasper. Four of those churches have two meters with each meter having its own account. One, generally one for residents and one for the church proper. And so that's, that's a pretty straightforward situation. There's essentially two customers. And so, you know, whoever's occupying the residence is likely paying the bill for the residential service. And then the church is served by another meter. One of the churches, one of those six churches has one meter that serves both the church and an attached residence. So a little bit of a different situation. So where one service is providing for two, you know, into the same building, sort of two different functions. The United Church is somewhat unique in that in addition to the church proper, the parcel also contains the McCready Center, which is physically attached to the church and then also separate residence. So the McCready Center is really the thing that, that changes the situation. As you can see in the table provided in the report, the United Church McCready Center building is served by a two inch line. While the residence is served by what is generally pretty typical for residential property or smaller properties, a five eighth inch line. You can see a comparison of the United Church billing compared with the other churches, the other five churches in the community. So the United Church does see a significantly higher total bill than other church properties due to the two inch meter serving the hall and church. And although administration doesn't have complete information, given the historic nature of the development, it is likely that this larger service size was a requirement at the time of development as relates to, you know, total, total potential occupancy of the hall, the kitchen that's built in and the number of bathrooms. These would be different features that might be included in other church buildings. You know, a church isn't likely to have a kitchen where the hall, you know, obviously does. Administration would note that, well, this cost may pose a challenge for the United Church. And that's fully acknowledged. It is actually an example of the CCC rate model working as intended. A property with a larger service size that can make a higher demand on the overall system is paying a larger contribution towards improving and maintaining the infrastructure that serves the property and all properties of the community. Administrative would make the observation that while it may be modest, the church does have revenue generating potential associated with it in terms of the ability to rent out the McCready Center. This is not an opportunity that exists for a lot of the other churches in the same way. And again, administration would acknowledge that the church generally, the McCready Center rentals are generally for community purpose. And you'll see in our inclusion consideration and acknowledgement that the McCready Center and church buildings generally, but the McCready Center in particular does serve as a community hub, offering space for gatherings, not for profit groups and various social activities that contribute to community cohesion engagement. So certainly administration acknowledges that that's true. And that that probably impacts the revenue potential that they could do in terms of what rents they could charge. But it also has to be acknowledged that that property does have a revenue potential that doesn't exist for other church properties. Administration took, undertook a further analysis to support the alternatives that are in the report. And should council choose to approve special consideration for the United Church, council should be aware that it's possible that other property holders may request similar treatment. In total, there are thirty seven account holders that have more than one meter. And of those thirty seven, just seven are similar to the United Church that have meters of different sizes. So if all of those seven accounts were to pay at the cost of the smallest meter, which is what the United Church is requesting, the total annual loss would be approximately thirty seven thousand dollars per year. And if council chose to provide retroactive, you know, compensation for that, the total cost would be approximately seventy four thousand for the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three years. So the United Church's higher utility bill is due to its larger second meter. It does reflect the intended functioning of the CCC rate model, ensuring that those with greater infrastructure contribute more towards the ongoing maintenance and upgrades of the water and wastewater infrastructure. Granting the church special consideration could prompt Granting the church special consideration could prompt similar requests from other organizations, um, some for-profit organizations uh that are in a similar situation. Um, and ultimately, any reduction in the amount paid by any property would essentially be lost revenue would have to be recovered from all other utilities payers uh either through an increase in rates, uh one of the other rates, uh because the overall utility is intended to be self-financing. So uh administration presents this information for council's consideration. We do have a number of alternatives, of course, as I said, in terms of maintaining equity, maintaining equity uh and ensuring the system that is in place is applied consistently. Uh, administration is recommending that committee receive this report information and take no further action. Alternatively, if committee did wish to recommend action to council, you could choose either choose to write off the uh utility receivable for the United Church in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and twenty eight forty five cents and take no further action, essentially saying, okay, we appreciate that this may have been unexpected for the United Church. Uh, and we will provide this one-time utility write-off for that amount, but going forward, uh, the United Church will have to expect to pay uh in accordance with the model. An additional option is that council could recommend uh committee could recommend council authorize the write-off for the United Church and direct administration to bill the property uh capital connection charges based on the five-eighths inch meter size going forward. Essentially, uh, and this was essentially the the church's total request. Uh, this is exactly what they had requested. Um, that we would write off the amount outstanding and that going forward that we based on a smaller service line. A final option is that committee could recommend council authorize the write-off for the United Church and direct administration to bill all properties that have more than one meter uh capital connection charges based on the smallest meter going forward. So that one is essentially acknowledging that there are at least those seven other properties that would be in a similar situation. Um, the cost associated with that final option would be approximately thirty seven thousand dollars a year, as mentioned in the report. So administration has done the analysis, has provided, I think, a uh reasonable estimation of the financial impacts associated with the options and alternatives and given a full list of alternatives for council. I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to, and uh this was here for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Um, Counselor Wilson.
Uh, just a few questions. Uh, um, does the McCready Center have fire suppression?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, Councilperson Wilson, that was something I also checked. Our records don't show that they have sprinkler system and that wouldn't be a surprise to me, given the age of the building was likely not a requirement at the time. Um, I don't know if there are additional um fire connections uh that would support that increased meter size. Uh, but that was an initial question I asked and the answer is that no, there is not an internal sprinkling system.
Um, couple more. Uh, uh, so second question, I guess, is um, is there the ability to reduce uh pipe size before it goes to the uh meter and then supply a five-eighths meter? So, yeah, in essence, anybody who uh before the CCC model came in that had larger pipe size, um, but they don't want the pipe that pipe size, they're they're uh they're happy with, say, five eights or whatever it is. Are we able to reduce and then just supply five eights by or five eights meter?
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Councilperson Wilson, that would be something that I would need to do additional uh research on. My initial concern would be that we may be going against building code. Um, certainly, uh, modern building code would likely require a public gathering space like the hall to be sprinkled. Um, and so anything that municipality would support in terms of reducing the capacity of the system, uh, you know, obviously wouldn't need current code and would put us further offside. Uh, so I would certainly be a bit concerned about that. I would have to check to be certain. Um, but my initial instinct would be that there's likely a reason why that had the largest ser- larger service size at the time of development. Um, and for us to vary that uh would say that we are you know, suggesting that whatever building code requirements at the time required that service size, that we are going against those requirements, even if they were historical. Um, so I would need to do additional research to see whether that was feasible. My initial concern would be that we may be creating a situation where municipality is um going contrary to to sort of the standards that were applied at the time and creating liability for ourselves.
For sure. And and that kind of goes on to my next question. Has the United Church gotten their research? Have they figured out, oh, we can disconnect this one? And if they disconnected, it would move by, oh, sure, but that's that's on the avenue, need to go out and do do the uh the research and consult the uh the experts to to suggest that they 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 don't need that and they could just run everything on the five eights. And so I think it's kind of the balls in their court in respects to what service do you need? Can you run off of just one meter? And if so, disconnect that one completely. But if it's the requirement of a two-inch because of certain building codes, uh, because it's a place of gathering, et cetera, et cetera, we I think they're just obligated to pay the the two-inch size and uh, yeah, so anyway, um. And then I guess la- last question was, uh, churches do have a reduction in taxes. They're not taxed at a they're taxed at a different rate than, say, commercial and residential, and I'm assuming that's lower or you fill us in there?
Thanks, uh. Deputy Mayor Melnick for Councilperson Wilson. So my understanding is that church properties are are not levied property tax. Um, and so uh they do have a reduction here as well in terms of their overall cost of operation. They're not the same as a as any other property that would have to contribute to the overall cost of the municipal operation because they're not subject to property tax.
Thank you for that. Um, Counselor Keller, happy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and to you, Mr. Given. The amount here is nine thousand six hundred and twenty eight forty five. Does that include interest um for them not having paid the first that straight utilities?
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Councilperson Helen Happy, I would have to confirm again with our finance team. Um, but I believe that that's the total amount going. Uh, I'm not certain whether it is inclusive of any interest that may have been created.
Go ahead.
Um, not so much a question, but a comment. I think since two years since we put the new CCC uh program into place and we've had a number of letters, we've had some presentations here at council. Um, I think it's time to do a review and I'd like to sit down at a workshop and true, I'll see if I go to the level if it's running the way we wanted it to. We did promise our community that we would review after a year and we really haven't done that. And I think in the interests of our community and our residents and businesses that, you know, as Councilperson Wilson there talked about, you know, pipe size, etc. We need to, I mean, maybe we need to look at the overall, the formula and we know it's working, but it's a debt load to everybody. So I'm trying to help to counsel. We support that.
Motion, counselors. Mary Ellen.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, I think I am on record as um a proponent of a of another workshop to look at the equitable distribution of of fees and charges for utilities. I met recently, well, last Tuesday with a commercial leaseholder who brought forward a number of issues related similarly to the matter before us, that is, um, one connection on the property, but two meters um and two meters haven't been installed to equitably distribute the consumption charges um between tenants of the building when all we did was charge um consumption. Um, and so there are different uses and so each of them, but just one connection to the building, but but two meters after that. And now they get um a, I think it's the connection fee is per billing, so the two meters each get a bill, so they're paying two connection fees when there's only one. And there are two meters and the capital charges are assessed in our fee schedule as per meter per billing. Um, so the the position of that commercial leaseholder is that they are paying double, um, they've only got one connection for the building. And it's arguable that if we can encourage people with multiple uses to meter uh individual tenants, that could lead, in fact, to uh conservation efforts. They know that they're they're paying for the water that they're using. Um, perhaps our our fee structure is um not encouraging consumption in the way that, or pardon me, conservation in the way that it could. So I would certainly support um looking at this again and seeing whether we can adjust or should adjust the system in in any way and perhaps doing that before we make a final decision on the on the particular question that's before us.
Any other counselor comments? So we seem to have a suggestion on that could come from count from committees that uh for the workshop be held and that this particular action item um for lack of a better term, could be tabled until that um particular uh committee meets. Is that uh what I'm hearing from members of council? To, in order to do that, we would need a recommendation from the committee to administration to, I believe. A link to us to have utilities workshop. And it sounds like um we may be looking at ways to uh amend or uh tweak this particular um method of um collecting for the uh capital connection and consumption of our water utility. Mr. Given, is that a possibility that we, if if committee was to make that recommendation, is that something that could be um organized within the next few months or is that um something that would be not possible?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, so certainly council can give uh administration any direction you wish. A couple of uh observations would be that it would still leave the status of the United Church's sort of past due amount uh outstanding. Uh, certainly we can get back and solve whether there is interest accruing on that. Um, and, you know, ultimately, council can choose to not collect for as long as you wish and then ultimately make another determination. So this now amount of, you know, nine thousand six hundred would continue to grow presumably until council makes some decision uh on this particular file. So we have one request from one account holder um that may raise other issues for council, but there is that specific request and specific issue um that would presumably be uh not dealt with until council has a wider discussion. In terms of organizing an overall review, uh, our finance department is currently focused on the year end um and setting the uh mill rate and and all the processes to levy the taxes in twenty twenty four. Um, so the annual audit uh closure of the twenty twenty three year end and setup for the uh twenty twenty four property tax season are probably the main focus of the department. I would suggest that in terms of a turnaround time, uh, administration would recommend that that would be within the next three months. So I don't know whether that's acceptable to council, um, but just given the the ongoing behind-the-scenes workload of stuff that needs to get done in terms of legislative requirements, uh, administration is currently focused on that. So the uh workshop, uh, an additional option could be uh for administration to identify uh external resources uh to be able to provide additional support. Uh, if council saw need for this workshop to happen sooner.
Thank you for that additional clarity and understanding of the current workload and priorities in administration. Is there a counselor who would like to make a recommendation or a direction? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I I'm not going to make a motion. I just wanted to um weigh in on this in front of us and I'm intending to lean towards the first alternate. And I know, which is writing off this amount, but taking no further action. I know that churches don't pay as much taxes, residential and commercial, but there don't think any churches rolling in money. In fact, some are giving their buildings away. Um, this, I I know it's been two years and yes, this church does house birthday parties, community hubs, but they also have an opportunity for revenue. I stayed there when I was in grade nine and came here on a ski trip and I see school buses there and this might just give them more chance to relook at their probably operating, could be getting more revenue to cover this. I I'm not going to make that motion. I just wanted to had some time to think and listen to the comments and that's, if we were doing this today, that's probably where I would land, but I I do agree that a uh workshop would be beneficial.
Counselor Keller, happy.
I will make motion that committee um direct administration to set up um a workshop on the uh utility CCC formula and that um if that can come back within the next three months, um, that would be acceptable and that we uh table this request to that workshop.
Um, any comments on the motion? Administration, um, clear, perfect. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We have uh five in favor and a lot opposed. And Mr. Given, that um she'll take care of this agenda item. And we are at um ten thirty six. I'm going to take an opportunity for us to take a quick break. I believe we're going to be through the agenda before the end of the morning. But I think a nine-minute break or eight-minute break to bring us back at ten forty-five will allow us to get through the agenda, hopefully, before noon. All right. Thank you very much. Um. Welcome back, everyone. We are at the committee of the whole meeting and we are at item, agenda item seven point four. Municipality of Jasper Library Board Insurance. Um, Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, Director Nedon is going to handle this item and I believe the the next one in the agenda as well.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, I will present this item in uh Mrs. Mallon Jack's absence. I worked with uh finance manager Michelle Deschain on bringing this forward to council. And um essentially the request came from the library board to be added as an additional name insured under the municipality's insurance policy. And I believe this stemmed from uh some discussions with other libraries and uh the request came from Mrs. Tom uh as such. And uh so you see the recommendation in the report is that committee recommend council approve the municipality of Jasper Library Board request to be an additional name insured under the municipal, municipality of Jasper insurance policy. Um, so the name of the organization, as it's stated in the recommendation, is is important, um, that it stays that way. And essentially, uh, the municipality does this for a number of other groups, which are uh some of the requirements are that they are registered nonprofits in the community and that they do generate some benefit to the community so that they are a community organization that council recognizes as a partner, essentially. And um this would affect our liability and umbrella policies as what would be extended to the Jasper Municipal Library Board. And so the building itself is a municipal property and has insurance as such, but this would be uh for the operations of the library, the library board itself. And the way this functions is that there is no cost to the municipality, as in um all the costs associated with any increase in the premium would be billed and recovered from the library board. So uh this is a pretty straightforward item, but also quite important to make sure that uh the board is covered appropriately. And um we do require formal council approval on this, so this is why it's here as committee recommend council at this stage. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nedon. Uh, are there any questions for administration or um? It seems to be quite clear. Any discussion? Then I would need a recommendation from Then I would need a recommendation from committee. Counselor Hall?
I would make that recommendation that council approve municipality, that committee recommend council approve the municipality of Jasper Library Board request to be an additional named insured under the municipality of Jasper insurance policy.
Thank you for that. I'll ask the question one more time. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Moving on to item seven point five. Potential amendment to rates and fees by law for twenty twenty four. Ms. Nedon, I believe that would be yourself.
It is. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. So this is in front of you following some discussions at the last regular meeting when council gave first and second reading to the rates and fees by law, which in at this, at this stage is only proposed to include the sidewalk seating fees as well as the business licensing fees. And following correspondence from a permit holder downtown who uses the parking lane as reserved commercial parking essentially and was making the case that they were not using the space for the full twelve hours a day when paid parking is in effect, so nine AM to nine PM. And council discussed the opportunity to include a discounted rate for that purpose. And so about halfway on under discussion in italics, there is a motion that council could raise next week. So when the recent fees by law is back for third reading would be the opportunity to include that edit. So you'll note that the recommendation for today is that committee receive this report for information, as in today is not really the time to be making edits on the bylaw. And so if council wished to include a discounted rate for users who may use the parking lane for less than twelve hours a day, we have draft wording for motion there. And what we're recommending is that this approach would only apply to permits for purposes other than sidewalk seating or cafes. The reason for this is that the criteria for the installations for sidewalk seating are quite complex and those structures, once they're installed for the season, they stay there. And we do have some concerns if someone was to try to dismantle a structure and try to put it back and in terms of meeting the public safety standards associated with that. So that's why you see that in our discussion. And administration would be supportive of really any set fee that council might decide. There was discussion last week that the fee that was set for twenty twenty three could just carry forward and it'd be the fee for people using it for less than twelve hours. Again, as long as this is set fee, I know we discussed prorated, but that would be pretty administratively cumbersome to implement and monitor. So a set fee would be our recommendation here. And also the wording that would end up in the bylaws, so on page two of the report, Schedule A. So you'll note that we've, the hot, the areas highlighted in yellow in that table, so we would add the qualifier that sidewalk seating use of parking lane twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, which was the discussion that came to council initially. And then we added another item that is called use of parking lane less than twelve hours a day. And because it does not specify that that's for sidewalk seating, it would therefore apply to any other potential uses, which currently there's only one permit holder that does not do a cafe or sidewalk seating. And it is, like I said, reserved commercial parking is the best way to describe it, but potentially retailers or other businesses could avail themselves of that same opportunity. And if they do indeed use the parking lane for less than twelve hours, then the discounted fee would apply. From an enforcement perspective, we've discussed this internally and we would propose that the proposed hours be documented in the permit that we issue. So that way that would facilitate enforcement on our end. So we could verify whether or not the installation, they're actually removed for the period of time that the applicant suggests they will. And then the only real concern we have from an enforcement perspective is that if signage or the installation is removed in the evening, let's say, someone could potentially park there in those stalls, be there from say, seven PM to nine PM, which is the two hour time limit for paid parking. Starting at nine PM, there are no restrictions. So there's nothing preventing them from being in that stall the next morning from nine AM to eleven AM. So our ability to enforce removing vehicles at nine AM would be inexistent because the signage is not in place, right? So parking dance function on the regulatory sign, that is usually the top one on the post, the white sign with the green circle around the P kind of situation. And that's in the absence of that signage, we could not enforce. So that's something that the applicant should be aware of and that we would communicate with them, but that's the risk they take by removing their installations from the parking lane for less than twelve hours. Happy to take any questions. Like I said, this is here as a receipt for information to equip you to have the right information ready for next week when we come back for third reading on that bylaw. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nedon. Any questions by counselors? Counselor Keller MP?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, to you, to Ms. Nedon. So currently, the applicant who's saying they remove their barriers at night, do they put them back then like early in the morning or how do they manage now with that space or people in their space in the morning?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Keller MP. In discussion with Mr. Jones or Licensing Enforcement Manager, he had a bit more of a nuanced view of when the signs actually get removed and and get put back. And again, it's not something that we actively monitor and enforce because they do have access to the the parking lane for the whole twelve hours as far as we're concerned. And to your point, I think the way they function effectively is that they get out there first thing in the morning and secure the spots probably around, you know, seven AM before downtown gets busy. But in in the odd chance that someone is parked there overnight, there's really no way to enforce it. It's not something that's been raised with us as a concern from the applicant, but it's maybe something they're already managing and that we're not really aware of, but just so everyone understands that that's a possibility.
Thank you for that, Ms. Nedon.
Thank you for that. Counselors, any other questions for administration? Then I think we have a recommendation that we'll need a motion. Counselor Waxer?
That committee received this report for information.
Thank you for that. And all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. We are now moving to agenda item seven point six. Just with the gen item seven point five, when that'll come back to council, could the full request for decision come back to council? So that we have everything in front of us. Sometimes we get a request for decision in council and we need to refer to a previous meeting for the actual detail. I just wonder if this could be included in the agenda as a full item.
Sure, certainly. Deputy Mayor Melnick, we can conclude that. As you saw, the recommendations from administration, you can't amend the bylaw from committee or a recommendation from committee to council to amend. Administration's intent was to provide council with appropriate wording should you wish to amend the bylaw. So we can certainly include this RFD as an information item in the package so that it can, you know, refresh council members' memory of what the proposed wording was. Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Which brings us to item seven point six, public statements policy. Ms. Nedon, is that three for three?
It is. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and in record time, if I may add. So this one, let me skip to the right page, is actually coming from the Legislative Committee. So Counselor Hall is the chair. Counselor Demota and Mayor Ireland are are part of this committee. So we review legislation and propose changes and review the procedure by law as one of our main items at at that committee. This one came forward in relation to the nonstandard crosswalks. So there was a recommendation from administration to that committee that that policy was not really required. Policies address recurring items and allow us to have a consistent process as we deal with requests from the public from the in this instance. So we were recommending the deletion of the nonstandard crosswalks policy. However, the committee felt like there was still a an interest in having council reviewing those requests and approving them. And that's how we came up with the current format where we are proposing to rescind the nonstandard crosswalks policy as well as the proclamation letter of support and flag raising policy and encompass all of those items into one new policy called Public Statements. And one of the main benefits of this approach is that we can really put forward our commitment to diversity and equity is is very much the the framework for those requests for public statements for council. And in practice, nonstandard crosswalks, proclamations, letters of support, flag raisings are the items that are contemplated here. So providing guidance to administration to process those requests, bring them to council or committee, depending on the on the nature of the request. And potentially other requests could come that are not specifically outlined in the policy, but that would fall in that general category of public statements and would give us the background to say it has to align with council strategic priorities, it has to be aligned with our diversity and inclusion goals and things like that. So that is the request before you. So to that committee recommend council again to approve policies, we need a council decisions. At this stage is to advance to council to approve the new one and rescind the other two. And because this came from the Legislative Committee, I think I would invite any additional information to be provided by either Counselor Hall or Mayor Ireland, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. Any additional comments on the recommendations from the Legislative Committee? Sorry, Counselor Waxer?
I just wanted to express appreciation for that work and that I think this is a a great step forward combining it all into public statements.
Thank you. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I would just add that we've intentionally broadened it from the previous categories as well by by saying including but not limited to. There is, I think, a possibility, maybe a probability, that there will be requests for sidewalks rather than crosswalks. Crosswalks have such a short shelf life. And I see other jurisdictions now are are doing rainbow sidewalks just for foot traffic, which lasts much longer. So we've tried to to just broaden it, recognizing that council is in a position to make all sorts of statements publicly that support various groups. We need not limit ourselves necessarily to nonstandard crosswalks and flag raisings.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? It appears this can be dealt with as one recommendation from committee to council, or would it be better to do three separate recommendations?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, I think administration is fine either way. We do need to have specific council motion to rescind policies. So you could do it within and that council rescind, rather than having separate motion. So you have one mover as long as all three parts are there, the establishment of the new policy and the rescinding of the two sort of updated policies that it replaces.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Would a member of the committee like to make that recommendation? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I will move that committee recommend council group policy F dash one one two, public statements as presented. And that committee recommend council rescind policy F dash one zero one one, nonstandard crosswalks, and that committee recommend council rescind policy F dash zero one two, proclamation letter of support and flag raising policy.
Thank you. Sure, there's no need for further discussion, but I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. That will now bring us to item number seven point seven, and that is the establishment of a new public EV charging station. And Mr. Given, I'll leave that to you.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick. So as you say, the recommendation is that committee recommend council approve the participation in the eVenture charging network and that committee recommend council approve the establishment of four new electric vehicle charging stations in the off-street parking lot adjacent to the public washrooms in the Longconop Drive through a license of occupation for a term of up to fourteen years. So the eVenture Northwest Alberta is a community-driven collaborative program among municipalities. They're seeking to build out a level three fast charger network across west and central Alberta. The project has been facilitated by the Community Energy Association. And the municipality has been working together since at least twenty twenty, outlining the process for identifying appropriate locations and seeking funding. The group had been looking for funding under the federal Zero Emissions Infrastructure Program. They have not received funding to date. And so the project has largely been stalled. In June of twenty twenty two, administration became aware of the initiative and requested whether the municipality might be considered under the program, recognizing that ultimately council approval would need to be given before any formal actions were taken. So potential sites were considered in Jasper and were included in the eVenture RFP as potential locations. The community currently hosts a total of eleven EV charging stations, including eight Tesla level three chargers and three level two charging stations, all situated on the east end of town. And then, of course, there is the one at this facility that is in addition to those totals, which is a level two charger, which is a little bit slower. The proposal that has come forward is that while the project has not received federal funding, the group has selected a development partner in ATCO sector through a public procurement process. And ATCO would like to keep the momentum going for the project by proceeding with two of the twelve potential sites. The one that's proposed in this here council's consideration in Jasper and one additional in Edmonton. So attached, you'll find a complete proposal document from ATCO. Highlights for council information, they're proposing to install four universal fast charging stations in the parking lot. The installation costs would all be responsibility of ATCO, such as ongoing operating and ongoing operational costs, such as electricity insurance, security monitoring and maintenance of the equipment would also be ATCO's responsibility for the term. ATCO estimates that the total installation cost would be approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Again, that would all be at their cost. And relevant to Jasper, obviously, they're not asking the municipality to forego forego paid parking revenue from those locations. So non-resident users that use those stations would be required to pay, pay for parking as though they would have, there's no charging. And then also additionally to pay for the cost of the energy that they would consume. The payment for parking within the municipality of Jasper and separately a payment for electricity would go through the ecosystem. So that's the proposal here. Should council see fit to support the request, administration would move forward by providing by providing ATCO with acknowledgement, the municipality is supportive. And we provide written confirmation of that support to ATCO for use in their development permitting process with Parks Canada. This is a similar process to what happened with the chargers at the east end of town, where the municipality or council approved the installation and where the administration ultimately formalized that approval by providing formal documentation of our willingness to allow that installation to happen on our our property. And then the applicant can use that with Parks Canada. So the recommendation again is that committee recommend council approve participation in the eventure charging network and then specifically that council approve the establishment of four new charging stations at the proposed location with a license of occupation for a term of up to fourteen years. Obviously, distribution of electric vehicle charging stations across different geographic locations ensures equitable access. It is important for a community like Jasper, which is seeking to Uh, ensures equitable access, uh, is important for a community like Jasper, which is seeking to. Uh. Be as desirable destination for as many types of travelers as possible, so having uh. A lot of capacity for electric vehicle charging uh will. Ensure our ongoing desirability uh for different types of travelers that may be using electric vehicles. And ultimately. Efforts to reduce CO2 emissions can positively impact climate change and lessen climate changes, negative impacts on vulnerable populations. I'm happy to answer any questions, council may have.
Thank you, um, Mister Given, uh, councillor Wilson.
Um, it might just be a typo on the um. Request for decision, uh, some reading here that uh Atco has proposed installation of four additional level two, yet we're. Uh, it is a. Level three EV charging. Network, and then it is going through the Atco uh document, it does state level three, so I just want to confirm, because. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, yes, absolutely, that is a typo, my apologies. The proposal is for a level three fast chargers.
Councillor Keller Ambey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um, Melnick, you too, Mister Given. So for fourteen years, uh, the infrastructure will be paid for to Atco, will be no cost to the town, who understand similar to what we did with Tesla that before we re-thing. And can you remember how many years our contract was with Tesla?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, for councillor Keller Ambey, um, you're absolutely correct, so one hundred percent of the capital installation costs and ongoing maintenance of the. Of the infrastructure itself, the charging infrastructure would be the responsibility uh to Atco, and there'd be no cost to the municipality. Uh, the municipality would still have our general cost of parking lot maintenance that we would have had in any case. Um, given a moment or two, I could find our documentation about the the Tesla agreement. I. Think it may have been for twenty years, but I would just want to confirm that to be certain, but Atco's proposal was for fourteen years, and so that's why the request is very impolite.
Any other comments by councillors? I'll just make the.
Councillor Wilson. No, go ahead, uh, just to fill the air, I was gonna um just. Say, oh, this is great, um, another um. Company or corporation coming to us and suggesting that we'll supply these services, uh, and so that's not coming out of the. Uh, municipal pocket and uh appreciate that. That's it.
No, and I think you took the words out of my mouth, basically, that, you know, when we can get infrastructure. At no cost to us and continue continue. Down the road of um being able to. Move forward in EV charging stations, I'm sure year over year, they're be going to become. More and more in um demand and to be ahead of the demand, I think, is a very good thing. So councillors, um, we would be looking for a um. Motion that uh to move this on to council. And is there councillor who will be willing to make that motion? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I would move that committee recommend council approve participation in the eVenture charging network. And that committee recommend council approve the establishment. Of four new level three electric vehicle EV charging stations. In the off-street parking lot adjacent to public washrooms on Knott Drive. Through a license of occupation for a term of up to fourteen years.
Thank you with that uh motion and the addition of the. Level three, I think, for clarity for the public. Um. Moving us into the future. Any? Comments on the motion? Seeing no hands. Uh, I would ask for a vote, all those in favor. That's carried unanimously. Which brings us to the end of the new business. And brings us to our motion action list. And uh. Mister Given, I'll leave you to discuss.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Uh, so we have a couple of items that administration is recommending could be removed or updated. Um, I'll. Fly through them quickly, uh, first, the Jasper Folk Music Festival item on July eighteen twenty twenty-three. This item has been on the agenda for some time. Um, the Legislative Committee and Council of Strategic Priorities have discussed uh potential criteria. That could be developed for council to use in consideration of any external requests, and so. Administration's recommendation is that this item likely doesn't need to be dealt with because um. It really has initiated this discussion of overall criteria. Um, the organization could feel free to, once that criteria has been developed, uh, the organization could feel free to request uh council uh appointment. Again, uh, but administration really believes that this will be superseded by the that criteria that will come forward, so our recommendation is that it could be deleted. Um. The transit capital projects, uh, administration is recommending updating the target date to May twenty twenty-four. Um, we see that as ongoing items because uh any direction from council is that any transit-related capital projects need to come forward to council first. Uh, that's clear to administration, um, we obviously have brought forward the uh, the. Uh, transfleet facility, next item would be the transit buses themselves, uh, we don't expect that to come forward. Before May, and so just an update to the timeline on that item. Um, and then finally, the men shed item, sorry, is that nearly finally, the men shed item, uh. From January sixteen will be replaced by the direction that was given today. And uh, the same with Jasper United Church utility request, uh, I think. From a minimum perspective, I think council's provided a motion that this request be tabled, so that would replace. The uh, the item that's here, so with an updated item, um, and that would be obviously following the council workshop. So the suggestion would be that we could delete this United Church Utilities Request item, the men shed item. Um, update the the due date on that Transit Capital Projects item and delete the Jasper Folk Music Festival item.
Thank you for that, I. Do have a question on. Um, the first item, I think in the last meeting, we talked about the Clean Energy Improvement Program. And I thought there was a discussion about. That coming on the motion action list. Or was it just updated?
I think I just said, let's remove it if there's not going to be any movement on it, and uh Mister Given suggested that he'd like a one last kick in the can.
Thank you, and I think that it was based on availability of funding, if I remember right.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, there really is, uh, the the main barrier on this item has been administrative capacities, council knows our uh municipal energy manager position is vacant. That budget can also give approval to a part-time uh position for a two-year term. Administration has uh opened the recruitment for that, it is closed, we have a number of applicants, and then we'll be on the next week or so. To interviews, uh, and then following the interviews, then we would have somebody to assign this task to. Uh, on the other side, uh, we have been uh. Requesting and and receiving some support from the Municipal Climate Change Action Center uh with Alberta municipalities. They have a pretty long list of municipalities that are also interested in being a part of the program, and so they're uh. I think they have some capacity issues in terms of how many municipalities they can support at once, you know, through the application process, so there are those two capacity issues. Um, one, sort of our responsibility in-house, and then one, the partner that we were uh looking to for advice and guidance, um, both of us just. Having, yeah, having the capacity to deal with it. Um, but as councillor Wilson said, uh, with the recruitment of the position underway, ideally, we would have somebody that we could sort of task with this and see if we could make some headway before. Uh, council chooses to discard the.
Thank you for that. With, is there any other discussion on the motion action list? If not, going once, twice, we'll need a motion. To change or to accept the motion actionist, can councillor Waxer?
Uh, that committee approves the updated motion action list.
And I'll call a question, all those in favor. And that's carried. Councillor, upcoming meetings, uh, item nine. Councillor Keller Ambey.
This is not a, not an upcoming meeting, but last Friday I attended TransCanada Everhead Highway uh. Committee meeting, and uh, it's that time of year again that we're gonna have our AGM on May thirty-first in Edmonton. And it's resolution time. In the past, we have some resolutions in regarding the East Gate, so widening out the Highway sixteen. And I'm just drawn to that to counsel if there's any discussion or if anybody thinks we need to send any resolution, um. We should discuss it at an upcoming committee in the home and let me know.
Thank you for that.
And this Friday I'll be attending in person the Evergreen Board meeting in.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Uh, on the uh. Eighteenth and nineteenth, uh, will be attending the uh CMHC National Health and Conference in Ottawa.
Uh, Mayor Ireland.
Uh, tomorrow, Mister Given and I have been invited to meet with the. Or some of the board of directors of. AMPY and. Our MP, Mister Soroka, I think, um. Highway ninety-three, the Icefields Parkway will be the focus of that discussion tomorrow.
Then I think I'll. Chime in, um. I'll be attending the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce breakfast tomorrow morning. And then tomorrow evening, I have a Jasper Yellowhead. Historical Society meeting, which I'll attend by Zoom. Um, on Thursday and Friday, I will be in Edmonton. For the Spring Municipal Leaders Caucus. Um, at which time we'll be presenting the request for decision from Jasper. Regarding Childcare Capital Ground Program, and that'll be in the midday on Thursday. And beyond that, um, councillors, any other? Councillors with upcoming meetings? Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I will be attending a library board meeting this evening at five thirty.
Thank you, councillor Waxer.
I will be attending the uh community conversation for uh children uh on Wednesday.
Thank you, everyone. There may no more discussion for upcoming meetings, I'm gonna go to upcoming events. And this evening, we have live and in person. The Jasper National Park Public Forum, which will be at the Jasper Activity Center, starting at six o'clock, running for two hours. Um, as I mentioned, tomorrow morning, the Jasper Park Chamber General Meeting, and. Then we have um equity training. Um, here in the Jasper Library and Cultural Centre on March twenty-second for councillors in the morning. As well, I'd like to add an upcoming event, NEMU has been announced. That it'll be on March twentieth. And it's being hosted by the Jasper Artist Guild uh in this building from five until seven. Are there any other upcoming events that should be mentioned? Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. The fifteenth annual Jasper Pride and Ski Festival this year is April twelfth to twenty-first, so. The flag raising will be on the twelfth, just keep that in mind, council colleagues.
Councillor Wilson.
Well, it's not the uh World Cup biathlon, but uh the national championships are uh biathlon are being held in Hinton at the Hinton Nordic Centre from. The twenty-sixth through the thirty-first, uh, there's four days of racing, uh, super exciting, uh. To uh spectate, but also, uh, we're looking for volunteers for uh one or all of those days, so if anybody's interested in volunteering at this event, they can get in touch with me. Um, and I can direct you to the uh, the right people.
Thank you for that. Councillors, if there's nothing else. I just will make a personal note about the biathlon center in Hinton. In nineteen ninety-two, when the Olympics were in Europe. And our own Canadian female biathlon. Um, contestant, Miriam Bedard. She announced in Europe that her next event was going to be in Hinton. Councillors, if there's no other business, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Councillor Keller Ambey. Not to delay, but. I imagine there's a vote for all in favor. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, everyone, for. Who have zoomed in. To today's meeting, special thank, thank you to individuals who came to the council chambers today. To observe, and we will be here next week. On Tuesday, the nineteenth of March at one thirty for our regular council meeting. Thank you all.